Welcome to the Ryan White Planning Council first public hearing for 2024. The public hearing was pre-recorded online through Zoom. If you would like to have a copy of the information being presented this evening, you can view and download the documents from our website at r w P C Houston dot R. I am Johnny Deal, one of the co-chairs of the Effective Community Committee of the Ryan White Planning Council. As also with me this evening is the 2024 Chair of the Ryan White Planning Council Josh Mims. The co-chairs of the Quality Community Quality Improvement Committee, Tana Pradia and Pete Rodriguez. And Diane Beck, Council Coordinator in the Planning Council Office of Support. The focus of tonight's planning hearing is the recommended changes to the service funded by Ryan White Part A, Part B, and state service for the fiscal year 2025, which will begin on March the first, 2025. But first, there will be a presentation on Project LEAP by Diane Beck, who is one of the facilitators of the program. Afterwards, Tana will explain Quality Improvement Committee, how to best meet the needs process. Then Pete will present the committee's recommendations for HIV medicine support, supported services funded by Ryan White that are currently provided in Harris County and surrounding areas. Remember that everything discussed here will not be affected how service are delivered now, but will impact how service will be delivered possibly 10 months from now in the 2025 year. After the presentation, I will explain how you can get public comments regarding the information presented. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Ryan White Planning Council, who will discuss the role of the Planning Council and the purpose of this public hearing.
Thank you, Johnny, for that informative introduction. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Micah, and I use he/him el pronouns, Chair of the Houston Ryan White Planning Council, and I am pleased to welcome you to our public hearing. I will briefly describe the history of the Planning Council, what it is that we do, and why we're here tonight. The Ryan White Program is the largest federal program focused exclusively on providing HIV care for people who don't have sufficient healthcare coverage or financial resources to meet the challenges of living with HIV. Ryan White fills a gap in care that are not covered by other resources. The Ryan White HIV AIDS Treatment Extension Act of 2009 was first enacted in 2000, in 1990, as the Ryan White Care Act, and it was amended and reauthorized four times in 1996, 2000, 2006, and 2009. Adjusting with each reauthorization to accommodate new and emerging needs such as extending, as such as an extent increase in emphasis of providing lifesaving and medical services for people living with HIV. Ryan White works with governmental entities and community-based organizations to provide HIV-related services to more than half a billion people each year. There are several parts within the Ryan White Program, each one designated to meet the needs of different communities and populations affected by HIV. Part A funds are designated to serve the metropolitan areas and are awarded to the chief elected officer primarily responsible for providing healthcare to the geographic area. In Houston eligible meto, in Houston eligible, eligible metropolitan area, the person is Harris County Lena Hilaal. In 2023, Harris County received over $26 million to provide services to people living with HIV in six area, in six county area, which includes Harris, Fort Ben, Liberty, Chambers, Waller, and Montgomery Counties. In 2007, the state asked the Houston Ryan White Planning Council to make recommendations for Part B and state services. Part B funds are awarded directly to the state of Texas and are used to provide care for people living with HIV in a 10-area county, which includes, which, which includes the six counties previously named, plus Austin, Colorado, Walker, and Warren Counties. In fiscal year 2023, Ryan White Part A, Part B, and State Services dollars totaled over $31 million. Again, Congress requires that most funds to be used for medical care services for people living with HIV in the 10 candidate county area. Currently approximately, approximately half of 31, the 31,000 people living with HIV in our area are using Ryan White-funded services. By law, the council is responsible for determining the number of individuals in our area who are living with HIV, assessing the needs of the community, establishing a comprehensive service plan, setting services priorities and allocating funds, assuring services are sufficient to meet the needs, the future needs of the changing epidemic, assuring that appropriate services are available to meet the needs of the unserved and the underserved, women, infants, children, and youth, ensuring access to services for those who need substance disorder treatment, and assessing the administrative mechanism which procure services and distributes funds. The Planning Council falls under the Texas Open Meetings Act and its process and processes are, are open to the public at all levels. We strongly encourage participation by all members of the community and take public comment and input very seriously. The council is currently holding meetings in hybrid format, which gives you the opportunity to attend in person or virtually. The council meets on the second Thursday of every month at noon. For more information, call the Office of Support at eight three two nine two seven seven nine two six or visit the website wrpchouston.org. This information will be repeated to you at the end of the program. It is important to remember that the Ryan White Service Funds are funds of last resort. This means that all other resources for individuals must be exhausted or unavailable before Ryan White Funds can be used. For example, a person must use their private insurance Medicaid or Medicare benefits before they are eligible for Ryan White monies to pay for primary care, for pay for primary medical care. There are also income eligibility requirements that govern the Ryan White Funds. Many of the services that we provide have an income cap of 300% the current federal poverty guidelines, which means that an individual with a yearly income of 45,180 dollars or less would be eligible to, would be eligible for assistance provided that all other avenues of coverage have been exhausted. The same guidelines apply to a single parent with one child would be 61,320 dollars or less. The service categories to be reviewed this evening include those that are funded by Ryan White Part A, Part B, and state services. For example, the services that the Ryan White Program Funds are allowed to pub, or to, are allowed to provide include outpatient medical care, medications, oral healthcare, mental health services, and assistance with health insurance premiums, copays, and deductibles. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to inform the public of the recommended changes to the local service category definitions in order to get feedback from consumers of the Ryan White-funded services and others as to how to, how the recommended changes will affect their ability to receive medical care and supportive services. Community input is not only necessary, it is vital to all of the planning council processes and is encouraged at every level. At this time, I would like to introduce our next speaker, Diane Beck, Council Coordinator for the Office of Support. She will be presenting information about the Planning Council's training program, Project LEAP.
Thank you, Josh. Hello, everyone. I want to talk with you about an educational opportunity for people who want to learn about the HIV prevention and care system in the greater Houston area. The program is called Project LEAP, which stands for learning, empowerment, advocacy, and participation. Project LEAP is for people living with or affected by HIV. Classes start at the end of July, and the program is free, with the expectation that students participate in one class a week for 17 weeks, and they come to class prepared to listen and engage with the presenters and with one another. Project LEAP is unique to Houston and is only offered to 30 students once a year. The goal of the program is to provide skills so that the graduates use these skills to become effective and active participants in local HIV planning groups, such as the Ryan White Planning Council or the Houston HIV Prevention Community Planning Group. Graduates help shape the future of HIV services in our community. Project LEAP was created because local planning groups need people living with HIV and others who are not afraid to speak up and advocate for the needs of consumers. After graduation, students feel more knowledgeable and confident as they work with doctors, social workers, consumers, and others to design services. If you are a person living with HIV, or you have a friend or family member that is challenged by HIV, you are a perfect candidate for the class. How does Project LEAP work? Classes are held on Wednesdays for 17 weeks with approximately 30 students in each class. The classes last about four hours and includes hands-on activities, group projects, and field trips. Lunch is also provided. Guest speakers are experts in their field and enjoy sharing new and updated information with the students. What will you learn? As you can see from the long list here, some of the topics covered in class include HIV 101, the history of HIV in the Houston area, tools for designing and funding services, leadership training, and much, much more. Class participants learn valuable skills, including meeting facilitation and Robert's Rules of Order. Don't worry if you don't know what that is, we will teach you. You will also learn presentation skills, how to read and understand data, planning and evaluation skills, advocacy, and cultural competency. The facilitators provide information and handouts for each class. We have mock meetings with role-playing. We bring in expert speakers. There are hands-on activities, class projects, and field trips to see what planning groups do when they meet. Those eligible to apply for Project LEAP are people who are living with HIV or are affected by HIV personally or professionally, and who can meet the class expectations in terms of attendance and participation. So what do you get out of Project LEAP? You get knowledge and skills that help you to advocate for your health as well as the health of others. You get an extensive binder of information with easy-to-read materials about HIV, and you get access to experts and mentors as well as some new friends who share your passion and concern for the issue. Most of all, you get the opportunity to make a difference for people living with HIV. So how do you apply to be a LEAP student? You must submit a written application before July 12. We will call instead of an interview, which can be in-person or virtual depending upon your comfort level. The classes will be hybrid, so students can choose if they wish to participate in-person or virtually. The class will begin in late July or early August and ending mid-November. To find out more information or to apply, you can go to our website, rwpchouston.org, where you'll find a link to apply online, or you can call or send an email for a paper application. This contact information will be repeated for you at the end of the public hearing. We would love to hear from you. At this time, please turn your attention to the co-chairs of the Quality Improvement Committee. Tana Pradia is a 2014 graduate of Project LEAP, and she will explain the committee's function, followed by Pete Rodriguez, who will describe the committee's how to best meet the need recommendations for 2025.
Thank you, Diane, for the valuable information. Many current and former Council members are graduates. Would agree the training is very valuable for those who want to be involved in the planning process. How the best meet the need process is, the focus of tonight's public hearing, each of Part A, Part B, and Texas Department of State Health Services funded services, service categories was reviewed during a series of work groups comprised of consumers, service providers, healthcare providers, and other community members. When receiving the definition of each Ryan White-funded service category, the work, work, work groups consider many facts, such as the documented needs of various populations living with HIV in the greater Houston area, the history of the service usage, epidemiology, trends, and the availability of alternative resources, including both Ryan White and non-Ryan White funding. The work groups made recommendations, and the Quality Improvement Committee met to review and approve those recommendations. A copy of all service definitions, including recommendations from the work groups and Quality Improvement Committee is available in the information package, which is posted on our website at r w P C Houston dot org. We invite you to review this information and provide your input on the decisions presented. As comments received from the community regarding the recommendations, we will, will be forwarded to the Quality Improvement Committee for consideration and added to the recommendations that will go to the Planning Council for final improvement next month. Information on how you can provide public comment will be provided at the end of the public hearing. In addition to the work groups that reviewed currently funded services, a special how-to-best-meet-the-needs work group met several times to discuss the community needs for and feasibility for, of providing unique specialized services such as durable medical equipment, medical tailored meals, and medical res, respite care. Information regarding the results of this special work group are also included in the information packet. I would also like to mention our use of federal poverty guidelines as eligibility criteria for the Ryan White services. The services are evaluated annually during the how-to-best-meet-the-needs process. For most services, the financial eligibility is set at 300% of the federal poverty level. The federal poverty guidelines for 2024 are as follows. For a single person, 300% of the federal poverty level is an annual income at or below 45,180 dollars. For a family of two, 300% of the poverty level is 61,320. And for a family of three, 300% of the poverty level is 77,460. For each additional family member, added 5,380 dollars. The same acurement applies to smaller family sizes, as can be seen in the previous figures. According to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services webpage, they become effective on the day they are published. A copy of the 2024 federal poverty guidelines is included in the information packet. At this time, my co-chair Pete Rodriguez will present the recommendations and describe changes to the service definition for fiscal year 2025. Please note that the services discussed are for people who are living with HIV and meet the required eligibility guidelines.
Thank you, Tana. I will now present the recommended changes to the service definitions and eligibility guidelines for fiscal year 2025. The information packet for tonight's public hearing includes a copy of each of the service definitions along with a summary of the recommended changes for all service categories. The current financial eligibility for each service, as well as the just, as the suggested financial eligibility for fiscal year 2025 is listed on the table of contents of the service definition packet. First, I will present the list of the services for which no changes to the service definition or financial eligibility are recommended. Ambulatory outpatient medical care at community-based organizations in the public clinic, emergency financial assistance, pharmacy assistance, health insurance premium and cost-sharing assistance, hospice services, linguistics services, local pharmacy assistance program, mental health services for untargeted and targeting special populations, oral health, untargeted and targeting the northern rural area, outreach for primary care re-engagement, referral for healthcare ADAP enrollment workers, outpatient substance use disorder treatment, vision care. The Quality Improvement Committee is recommending changes to the following services. Ambulatory outpatient medical care rural. Keep the service definition as is and increase the financial eligibility from 300 to 400% of the federal poverty level. Medical and clinical case management. Keep the service definition and financial eligibility the same. Recommend that the priority and allocations committee increase the allocation to this service and ask the recipient to encourage agencies to use it to increase salaries to improve staff retention. Non-medical case management, service linkage. In the service definitions under staff requirements, remove the bachelor's degree requirement. Change paid working experience to one-year experience working with people living with HIV or a community health worker. Keep the financial eligibility the same. Emergency financial assistance other. Keep the service definition and the financial eligibility the same. Add durable medical equipment to the service. Ask the priority and allocations committee to sign it to Part B or state services and ask the Houston area Part B recipient to bring information to the Quality Improvement Committee on how the mechanics of delivering the service will work. Medical nutritional therapy. Keep the service definition, financial eligibility the same. Request that the providers increase awareness about the availability of supplemental nutritional drinks. Refer for healthcare incarcerated. Eliminate the service category due to, due to the availability of alternative resources and to avoid a duplication of services and medical transportation. Add the text to the service definition to ensure all clients with mobility issues have access to appropriate transportation and increase the financial eligibility for all transportation services from 400 to 500% of the federal poverty level. Ask the recipient to make it possible for clients to receive a bus pass from any Ryan White-funded agencies where they are a client, not just their CPC DMS record holder. The committee has recommended the following for two services that are not currently funded. Food bank, home-delivered meals. Revive the service definition for the purpose of possibly providing medically tailored meals and housing. Revive the service definition for the purpose of providing temporary assisted living and ask the staff to conduct a resource inventory of facility-based medical respiratory programs and underutilized hospice services. For more information about these suggested changes, please contact the Office of Support at eight three two nine two seven seven nine two six. I will now turn the floor over to Johnny to explain how you can submit public comments regarding the information presented at tonight's public hearing.
Thank you, Tana and Pete, and special thanks to the members of the Quality Improvement Committee and the many people who are part of the best-to-meet-the-needs and the work groups participants for the hard work they have put in into this important progress. After the hearing information presented this evening, you may want to give public comments to the Planning Council. The Planning Council falls under the Texas Open Meeting Act, and its progress are open to all the public at all levels. We strongly encourage participation by all members of the community and take public comments and input very seriously. There are several opportunities for you to provide public comments to the Planning Council. You are not required to give your name or your HIV status. To do so, you can email comments to feedback r w P C at Harris County T X dot government. You can text comments, I mean, sorry, you could fax comments to seven one three three four three four eight eight zero. You can phone in your comments to eight three two nine two seven seven nine two six. Or you can email comments through our Facebook page, r w P C H Houston. Comments will be received by our office before 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 29. Comments will be forwarded to the Quality Improvement Committee for review and considerations. If, if significant comments relates to the service categories are received, the Quality Improvement Committee will meet virtually on May 29 to review the comments and consider making changes to the recommended service definition. On June the 6th and June 13th, the steering committee in the Planning Council will review and vote on the FY25 service definition. You are welcome to attend all these meetings either virtually or in person. Please check our website calendar for meeting package, locations, and Zoom information. This concludes the first Ryan White Council Public Hearing for 2024. I would like to thank everyone who viewed the program for participating in this very important process. As stated earlier, the service category recommendation presented will not be affected how service are delivered now, but will impact how service will be delivered possibly 10 months from now in the year 2025. The Ryan White Planning Council meets on the second Thursday of every month at noon in a hybrid format, which gives you the options of attending in person or virtually. Please check the calendar on our website, r w P C Houston dot org for the locations of the council, committee meetings, work groups, meetings, meeting packets, and Zoom link. Staff is working remotely in the process of relocating the Office of Support. So call rather than come to the office if you need additional information. To apply for Project LEAP, free training program which looks at HIV prevention and care system in the greater Houston area, please go to our website, r w P C Houston dot org for a link to submit the application online. Applications are due before July the 12th. This is a wonderful learning for experience, and I encourage everyone with interest in HIV service to apply. Our next public hearing will be in July. We will present the Priority and Allocations Committee recommendations for the service. We will present the Priority and Allocations Committee recommendations for the service category. Priority ranking and funding allocations for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. On the behalf of Ryan White Planning Council, we thank you again for participating and having a good evening.